Here.
Mr. Williams? Is he here? Uh, this is Jordan. Is he here this evening? Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Frick Caffey?
Here.
If you have five minutes, I'll call him.
Thank you. Mr. DeMondi, is the demolition on Nine Mile Road? Uh, who's handling that?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, I'll refer to Doug Smith, uh, from AccuQuest on this. Um, I want to give counsel, uh, an update on the proposed implosion of one seven, one one seven, Nine Mile Road. So, thanks, Fred.
Twelve, right?
Uh, the date is the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Yeah, the target, it's a target date. Obviously, we're here just to inform you of the proposed demolition by implosion. Uh, but our, our target date is December fourteenth at eight thirty A.M. Subject to meeting all the requirements of the city, our neighbors, and, uh, the authorities that are, are involved, uh, in the process. Uh, I'm Doug Smith, by the way, with AccuQuest Realty. Uh, we serve as, uh, real estate advisors to Open Community College. Been in front of you folks before regarding the redevelopment of those properties along Nine Mile Road that the college has purchased over the course of the last several years, uh, most recently, one seven, one one seven, Nine Mile, the North Park Office Plaza Building. And pursuant to, uh, the college's, uh, agenda of redeveloping, facilitating the redevelopment of that property, uh, we are here tonight to discuss with you the demolition of that building via implosion. Uh, I have with me here tonight, uh, our general contractor for the demolition, North American Dismaneling Corporation, represented by Steve Johnson and Jerry Decker. And their subcontractor, who is an implosion expert, uh, CDI from New Jersey.
Baltimore.
Maryland, or Baltimore, sorry. Tom Dowd is here as well. And our civil engineer is here as well tonight, uh, Gary Tressel, and Mike Halliverda from Facility Department at OCC. Again, uh, we're in front of you tonight with a proposal, uh, to demolish the building via implosion, and, uh, want to answer any questions or concerns that you have. And to that end, I want to get the experts up here to talk about the process and the safety precautions that, uh, would be in place, uh, if indeed we move forward with the demolition by implosion.
Why don't we have them come up and tell us what, uh, they're gonna be doing and how they're gonna do it, and then, uh, we'll sort out the questions.
Fabulous. Appreciate the opportunity. Steve, Tom, want to come up?
Mr. Decker's first name?
Uh, it's Jerry Decker. Jerry's on the sidelines here, but we've got Steve Johnson.
Yeah, I need their, uh, names and, uh, I just, you know, I could still-
Okay. Steve, will you give your name and address?
Yeah, Steve Johnson, I'm with, uh, North American Dismaneling Corp. The address is P.O. Box three zero seven.
Speaking to that mic for somebody, there's a little problem.
P.O. Box three zero seven, here, Michigan.
You guys having trouble hearing?
Hold on back here, please.
My name's Tom Dowd, that's D-O-U-D. I'm a project manager for Control Demolition Incorporated. Uh, our address is twenty seven thirty seven Merriman Mill Road, Phoenix, Maryland.
Can you give us a little idea of what you're gonna be doing down there at Nine Mile?
Yeah, uh, by way of introduction, uh, North American Dismaneling is the general contractor for the project, as Doug mentioned. Uh, we've been working with the building department and, uh, Mr. Bodell. Um, thus far, we've been issued a partial demolition permit, and, over the last several weeks, we've been engaged in interior strip-out of non-structural building elements, including partition walls, floor coverings, things of that nature. What we're proposing, this is a seventeen-story structure, uh, about two hundred and twenty feet overall. We're proposing an implosion to, uh, bring that structure down to grade level. Um, we have employed the services of CDI, an expert in this process, to, uh, provide us that expertise. And, uh, Tom has, uh, flown in from Baltimore to, to address you this evening and provide a brief description of, of that process, so I'll, I'll turn it over to Tom at this time.
Okay. So?
What our, our basic plan is for the structure here is, we'd like to load explosives on the ground, the fourth and the seventh floor. Uh, we may do some additional structural modifications on the tenth, potentially the thirteenth. And what we'll do, basically, is we'll sequentially detonate each of those columns throughout the, the structure. And by doing it sequentially, we can keep down the amount of explosives detonating at one time, which keeps down air overpressure. It'll help break the building up, which will facilitate the cleanup for NADC, and what it'll also do is get the structure lower to the ground, which is our, our ultimate goal, is to get the structure lower to the ground where North American can attack the debris pile from the ground and not have to be working at heights. Again, we understand that explosives, the people that are, are not used to them can be a, a scary word. Uh, what we're doing here is we're proposing a thousand-foot radius around the structure. Um, we're gonna be coordinating with the local police and state police, uh, do a rolling roadblock on the highway. Again, we know that we're, we're a nuisance in that fashion, but in any demolition project, whether you guys were to use conventional methods or explosives methods, when debris starts falling, the buildings start to move, people drive, people look, and they have a tendency to steer where they look. Uh, by closing down the streets around and the highway, we can remove that potential hazard, which is our, our ultimate goal, is, is safe. Um, like I said, we'll establish a thousand-foot radius around the structure when we do detonate. Uh, our current plan is to deliver explosives the afternoon of the tenth. Um, we've got a couple of days of fabrication, a couple of days to load the str- structure wire, the structure. Whenever we're not on site, the structure will be guarded twenty-four seven. Uh, there's only gonna be one access, access to the upper floors, so we can control that. In my twenty-five years, I've never had a problem with anyone getting into any one of our structures. Uh, it's always a big concern. The morning of the event, uh, like I said, we're gonna employ local PD. We'll also be using, uh, six or eight of my own people, uh, be inside the area to make sure, mainly down in the college area, that we don't get anyone inside of that zone. I'm the licensed blaster. Uh, like we said, we're going for eight thirty that Sunday morning. To me, eight thirty is a tick on a clock. We will shoot the structure as soon after eight thirty as safety permits, I like to say. When we're assured that we have control of the roads, the highway, the adjacent properties, once all parties are involved are clear and ready, we'll proceed. Typically, what happens is we'll go through our countdown procedure, three, two, one. The building should hit the ground in about seven seconds. We're anticipating a minimal dust amount, a, a minimal dust event here. Uh, the work that North American's done, they've completely gutted the structure. And most of your concrete, or most of your dust in demolition is created by concrete rubbing against concrete. So we'll have some in the floor slabs, and the explosives that we use, a linear shaped charge creates a fair amount of smoke. So that's mostly what we're gonna generate, smoke with a small amount of dust debris. Um, once the structure is down, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and we'll start opening up streets according to prevailing winds and where the dust needs to be chased and cleaned up. Our goal is to get the highway open in a matter of minutes, and then we'll, we'll look at Nine Mile and the surrounding streets accordingly.
Council members? Mr. Simon?
If someone wanted to watch, I'm, I'm sure there are people in the community who'd like to watch, um, where might they do it from and how far away?
We're gonna set up a zone, it's a minimum of thousand feet. Um, and you have to forgive me, I'm really good with the street names. I don't like to just draw, we've drawn a circle to, to show that thousand feet. Um, I would recommend anybody that wants to watch, Nine Mile to the east.
That make you watch?
Yeah. Nine Mile to the east. I know there's some residents out there, uh, some good all-street parking areas to watch. We'd like to tell people, and we advise people, stay home, watch it on the news. The best view, um, the one thing that we ask from the news is five thousand feet and a half mile, if you can keep your helicopters out that far. I mean, granted, you guys can look the heads or tail on a dime, modern technology, but, yeah, we like to tell people, stay home. Watch it on the news, watch it again and again and again. Stay home, stay warm.
Right.
So, who's, uh, gonna go and look at it?
Yes, they do.
Uh, you have, Mr. Moss?
Yeah.
Mr. Simon?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, based on all of my demo experience, which is nothing, it sounds like a great plan. Uh, my question, just for curiosity's sake, is this is very, very different than the demolition of the hotel, and why are we going, why are we going this route versus tearing it down piece by piece? I, I don't know if you're familiar, there was a building, not too long ago, right next door that-
Ramada?
That, yeah, the Ramada, we didn't, we didn't do this.
Different contractors, different-
Okay.
You know, uh, I'm not familiar with the size of that structure at all.
Pretty similar, I think.
This structure definitely lends itself to our, our type of work.
Okay.
I do know that they had some dust issues with that structure, dropping it piece by piece. I know that they had some invasive issues, and talking to the police when we were here with the building department before.
Okay. I mean, don't get me wrong, I was all in favor of a demo like this for the last building. I think it's pretty neat. And I remember talking with Al, a service, about, I, I don't know if there's enough time, I don't even know if there's a want for this, about figuring out if maybe one of the movie studios needs B-roll for a building exploding, and perhaps, you know, helping out with the cost of it, I don't know. I, that was just something we talked about when we were figuring out what was gonna happen with the Ramada. I don't know if that's something that is even in discussion.
We were actually this close to doing a promotion for ACDC. But their new al-, their new album comes out on the third, and they needed to have a structure done by yesterday to do all their promotion and the like, so.
All right, all right, well, it was a thought.
The cal-, the college is gonna pursue, you know, potential B-roll, if that's a possibility.
Sure.
These folks, um, North American will film as well as Channel Two. So, there'll be some film, you know, in storage, certainly.
Okay, sounds good. That's all.
Mr. Simon, is there any other?
Yeah, uh, are you gonna take the windows out before you-
No, sir. Uh, we've taken some of the windows out in what we call the direction of fall, which is to the south, away from Nine Mile, um, just to give us access to the steel columns. The thick and heavy nature of the window to the north will actually help keep debris off of Nine Mile.
So you say there'll be a minimum amount of, of concrete dust?
So, there will be dust. In any event, there, there will be dust. And I understand that with the last project, that was one of the issues that they had, was a repeated dust event, dust event, dust event. We're gonna have one event, we can plan for it, we can anticipate it, we can track the fugitive dust and clean it up. From the cleanup of the debris pile, from that standpoint, when the structure's on the ground, at that point, it's much easier to mitigate your dust, and you don't have so much fugitive dust leaving the site.
Okay, so, if I understood you right, you're gonna, it's gonna partially collapse and partially tip over. You said it's gonna, you have a fall zone.
Well, yes.
So you're not gonna drop it into the basement?
No, no. The, the entire structure wouldn't fit in the basement in this case.
Well, one of that is, uh, recording it.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna try and, and fill this out more, um, the, the nature of the building, the steel nature, the long and skinny aspect, it's, it's gonna wanna tip over more like a box.
Okay. I was down in Detroit when they did the, uh, Hudson's Building, and there was dust. Like their dust.
Again, different structure, um, a lot of masonry there, a lot of orange dust, and a lot of brick. Also lots of brick infill, um, and a lot of ash in the floor used for insulation. Yes, none of that material exists here.
Okay. Now, there's, uh, no asbestos in the building?
No, sir. It's been completely abated.
Okay, good. That's it.
Jonah? Uh, I just have a question. This is Sunday morning, there's a church just immediately, uh, to the south. Is that any interference in the morning on this Sunday? Anybody check on-
Right, that's, uh, right on the phone.
Were the, uh, what? What?
The Gold Dome.
The Gold Dome?
It's probably the church.
Yeah. Have they all been contacted as to the date and time, or how are you?
If they have not, they will be.
You also have Triant Church, which is the, here.
That's the Triant Church, right here, right back there.
Yeah.
Then you have one right next to it, so it's a job.
There was a meeting last, last week, where all the businesses were invited. How many people were there in attendance?
Uh, there weren't as many as we expected, but I have gone to each stakeholder within that thousand-feet radius to talk to them individually about what was happening, and the fact that there was a meeting, so they are aware of, of what's gonna happen.
We'll get hold of the churches. I don't know, those three that you mentioned.
We're gonna work with the pastors, so they can talk about Armageddon and-
Uh, it's, and you're gonna walkie-talkie. Those distances, uh, depending upon the prevailing wind, they may not even hear the event. Additionally, they may not feel the event. We will be placing six seismographs, uh, excuse me, seven seismographs around the area to record the event, so that if there's any question about infrastructure, sewer lines, adjacent properties, we have that scientific data to show exactly what kind of energy that we did put into the ground.
Usually, what they do is, for all the cracks in the road except, hey, this was your first.
Well, we'll do a cursory above-grade inspection, uh, the adjacent structures. We don't get into a lot of roadwork. Just a little vibration information. The U.S. Bureau of Mines, and this'll tell you how old the statute is, says that at two inches per second, peak particle velocity, that's ground movement, you have the potential to crack plaster. That's how far back it goes. Traditionally, in a structure like this, we'll be less than point zero five. I, I like to say, you know, if you were to take a bucket of sand and drop it on a table, we're gonna take that same bucket of sand and pour it onto the table, so that you don't get one done. By doing the building sequentially and have it come over in pieces, and over time, what it actually does is absorbs its own energy and reduces the vibration.
Is that building, is it, uh, I'm looking, is there a mark of steel in it?
No.
Does that-
There's a, a few columns that I would say are of peculiar thickness, but no, it's standard steel construction.
Yeah, I've, uh, seen, uh, shows on television showing how this works and how, and some of the things that you're able to do, and there's more than just guesswork involved there, so.
That's definitely fine.
So, you're a professional in it, so I think things will go all right.
Thank you.
If I may-
That could be shortened, huh?
We are recouping all of our public safety costs, and by our public work, that's all been addressed in, in this. Insurance is all applied, and, and required as well.
Good. Good luck.
That's it.
Thanks for your time. Thanks for your time.
This isn't an accident, I, we don't have anything to do with it.
Do we have big students, do we have to answer to-
No, this is information.
Of course, remember the lady that came to our last meeting and said, that whenever we do something, whenever something happens in the neighborhood, the neighbors ought to know about it, um, because if somebody bought a house and it was gonna tear it down in your neighborhood, maybe you need to tell about it. I don't know what kind of-
Well, I think that's what Al was saying, with the help, trying to get all the-
Yeah, 'cause there's, 'cause businesses, with Harrison and the partners-
Oh, yeah.
Somebody.
Candlestick.
Yeah. And the ones across behind. Oh, the ones across behind, uh, Channel Twelve. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I, I, every property manager, I've tried to issue, um, went to Cold America to record this, I asked these gentlemen-
Yeah, because it's seventy-two.
The kind, because Cold America's probably closer than the churches, and Providence Place is gonna be shut down for about an hour and a half, right?
That's about right.
They're not, they're not gonna be able to leave it now. It's the same thing with, I think that's the only-
The TV Two, Channel Two, Fox Two.
Yeah, Channel Two. The legacy place has other exits that they can get on the Providence Road, so they're not gonna be, uh, they're not gonna be stuck at home. But, so, we made a, we attempted to contact everybody.
Okay.
Put a banner on the side of the building that said, "Gone, four, fourteen."
It's like a tick.
Yeah, right.
How many seconds, minutes was that?
One and five.
The next item is the CoStar database. Mr. Jordan, you got it?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna ask Ms. Freeman to address this, uh, contract renewal proposed by CoStar, uh, professional services.
Um, the business development department and the assessing department is-
Well, I'm trying to speak to that mic, you know, it's really, I don't know what's going on, you can't, but-
Is that working?
It doesn't, I don't think so. No, I don't think so. Someone keeps playing with the switch.
Yours is one of them. No reason, light's on, no reason.
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Huh?
What?
Did you say something?
Is that better, Doc?
Yeah.
Just go ahead, Shelley, we'll try to make it through without, just try to raise your voice like you're, to your husband.
Sure, yes. Um, the business development and the assessing department have been utilizing the CoStar database for a number of years now. We're looking for an extension, for a new contract for three years. Um, CoStar is a database that provides us with valuable information on all of the properties that are in the city of Southfield. They have field officers that go out and gather data on the tenants, um, and the, the sales of the properties, and they put that all into a database. And so, um, a lot of real estate professionals and local communities utilize this service to gather information. We use it for a variety of purposes on a regular basis. When a new business, when someone's looking to open a new business, they might call me, I can do market analysis for them, and help them determine if that's a good location for them to lease the space. When other people are looking for a variety of office space, I can download, based on their, um, requirements, and send them a PDF report of available space, and give them the contact information to different Realtors, um, as well as people that are looking to purchase properties. It's a very useful tool. Um, I use it along with Sarah Malali in the planning department, and the assessing department uses this information for sales information, and they all have two users. I'm looking for a three-year contract. We were able to negotiate a, a forty percent, forty percent reduction in the cost this year, um, so the contract would be eighteen thousand, forty-eight dollars annually. Um, this is a twelve thousand dollar reduction, um, through our negotiation and through an extended contract, so in the past, we've had two-year contracts. Um, as well, we've downsized the number of users for the system.
So, this is going to be on the next council meeting, or do you need a plan?
That would be fine.
Okay. And council members, question?
I don't know, it's kind of extraordinary enough, I don't-
Can't quibble with that.
Well, I mean, why?
Why we, why the reduction?
Yeah, that's a lot.
Um, you know, they've seen, well, you know, really with technology, the advancement of technology, they're able to reduce their costs as well. They, um, purchased one of their, um, it wasn't really a competitor, but it was the closest person in the field, and so just through, um, really the advance of technology, plus we've downsized the number of users that we've, that use the system. Um, our DDA used to utilize the system, now we just share the information with them. Assessing had, um, several additional users, which, um, uh, the city assessor did not deem it necessary to have more than two people. So, through all that, um, and just, you know, negotiating a better price with them, we were able to get the price now.
So, you're saying that a big part of that is, uh, the reduction in, in use?
Uh, the amount of people that we've had, um, this system is only tied to certain computers, so I can't log into this computer and use the system. It's only based on select people are allowed to use the system. And so in the past, uh, several departments had dedicated use, users for the system, and if they were using it or not, I can't tell you. But, um, after we evaluated who is using the system, it was deemed that we really only need four. There's been a reduction in staff and, um, changes in, in, uh, assessing.
What I'm getting at is it's an overall reduction in the cost.
That's right.
It's not just, it's, it's three hundred people.
Uh, you know, we also got a, through, you know, an, adding an extra year for the contract, and, you know, just working with them on the place, they're south, they're, they have their offices in the Southfield Town Center, and they wanna keep us as, uh, you know, on their system, so. Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything else, council?
No.
Thank you.
If we move on to the next item?
If I may, uh, Mr. President.
Mr. Jordan?
The, uh, next item is refreshing authorization for the fire department to submit grant to FEMA for the acquisition of a new radio system, uh, nine, uh, nine cell, uh, rescue devices, and four automatic compression devices. Uh, we are asking for Rule Ten, the application is due by December tenth, and I want to commend that the fire chief and his staff were, you know, scouring those resources to bring in these extra dollars for equipment. So, I'll turn it over to Chief Rowley and his team.
Yeah, you'll see they're pretty sizable. Uh, Mr. President, council-
And also, uh, she's being paid, speaking about, is she gonna, please?
Yes, I will. Uh, Mr. President, council, Madam Mayor, uh, Madam Clerk, and Madam Attorney, and guests, uh, appreciate the time to talk to you. Uh, I wanted to take one step back and talk about the demolition from the fireside. I'm glad that they're doing an implosion compared to what they did last time. I, I witnessed the whole demolition last time with the excavators, and it was terrifying to me as a, as a safety officer and a rescue officer. I watched the excavators under that structure with their, their hydraulic, uh, equipment, and, and just before it fell, I was standing there, and it was rap, 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 and you hear them beep, you hear the beep, they're backing out, beep, 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 and I, I'm watching the building crack as they're still beeping out. And, and from a fire service professional watching that, it was terrifying, okay? Uh, because I always err on the side of safety, I want people far away, and they have a thousand-foot zone now, they're highly professional, it sounds like we've been in a number of meetings with them. Uh, I'm very confident, uh, we, we've talked about, uh, the cloud, the dust cloud, and that's the reason we wanna have a rolling roadblock on the expressway in case it migrates that way. We're not sure which way the wind's blowing, if the wind's blowing too much. Like you said, that eight-thirty time is, is really relative. If the wind's blowing too hard, they won't, they won't drop that building until the conditions are exactly right. And we have a command post that we're gonna be setting up, police and fire. Um, I would welcome any, any of the, uh, city officials to come and stay in the command post with us. It's gonna be out of that one thousand, uh, foot zone. It's the way we operate at every emergency scene. We set up an incident command, we have communication with our, with our people. We'll probably, by code, we're supposed to have hose lines, uh, laid out for demolition by explosion, but it's really hard to tell, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have a couple of engine companies standing by that are ready in case there was any spot fires that may arise, uh, and we, we're, we're kinda taking all precautions for any contingency. So on to this, the Southfield Fire Department is requesting permission, uh, to apply for the assistance to firefighter grant, and it's also known as the AFG grant. Uh, if you remember in the past, we have applied for the AFG grant. It's a federal grant program sponsored by the Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management, or FEMA, uh, and that, it, it's helped thousands of fire departments across our country obtain critically needed, uh, equipment, protective gear, emergency vehicles, training, and other resources that are needed to protect the public and the fire service professionals. Annually, the Southfield Fire Department conducts a department-wide needs assessment. Uh, the recommendations for the two thousand fourteen assessment included, there were three different areas. Updating our present radio communication system, I'll talk about each one of these individually in a second. Uh, updating our present radio communication systems to improve interoperability and with our regional partners. Improving firefighter safety, uh, on the fire ground through the use of self-rescue devices. And then enhancing our ability to provide adequate CPR during patient transport through the use of automatic chest compression devices. This is an item that I'll talk about and show an example of in, in just a moment, that we were already approved for in a prior FEMA AFG grant, but FEMA pulled those funds back because it was such a new item. Uh, some of their studies showed that they weren't, uh, they weren't quite sure they were gonna do what they said they were gonna do, and they didn't wanna invest the money. Well, over time now, they've, uh, they've been able to show, uh, great improvement in CPR and, and the capabilities, and, and a lot of life-saving measures with these devices, which I'll, I'll let our sales rep, uh, talk about in just a minute. So the radio system, there's a number of reasons why we need to update our radios. Uh, this was the first recommendation. Our present radios are no longer in, in production, and that's gonna, the replacement parts and repairs are gonna become more difficult and, and definitely more expensive to come by. Uh, the Southfield- The Southfield Fire Department is the only fire department in Oakland County right now that's not on the eight-hundred megahertz system. We're on a four-hundred system. So, communications with our mutual aid partners is extremely difficult. We have to go jump through hoops to be able to communicate with them when we're on, staying together. The enhancements also set us up for future compliance with government-required P-25 technology. We're not going to have that right away, but it sets us up in the future for when that technology is mandated. And P-25 technology is an industry-wide effort to set up recommended standards to uniform digital two-way radio technology for public safety organizations such as ourselves. And using the P-25 technology radio system will ensure communication devices can talk together. It's extremely important when we get on scene with mutual aid partners that we're able to communicate with them. And that's really the biggest problem, both on the police side and the fireside, is communications on scene. When the eight-hundred system is adopted, our reach and footprint will be greatly enhanced. We'll be able to communicate not only regionally but statewide. These new radios, when we drop this eight-hundred system, I'll be able to talk anywhere in the state. I have one radio right now that I use because I'm a division rep for Mavis that I can talk statewide to the state police. I can talk to fire departments in the U.P. off of that one radio. This will give us the capability to do that throughout our department. And the new system... This new system in the city of Southfield will give us the capability to be the backup for the county, which is important. The second request that we had was for firefighter safety through self-rescue devices. This firefighter is bailing out. I've got a quick video that I'll show you right now. Captain Scheichel started it up for me. This shows this rescue device. It's really short. Wish you could hear the sound, because you can really hear him breathing. He declared... He called a Mayday. Through the use of this device, this equipment, he was able to hook the window sill and self-rescue. This gives him rapid life-saving rescue technique, and it also prevents other firefighters from going into that structure and trying to locate him. He... Right away, I wish the audio was there. Right away when he called out, he said, "Clear a Mayday, clear a Mayday." And that told the incident commander, "I don't have to send anybody into the structure to rescue this guy." So, it saves individuals on this side, and it saves individuals on the other side. Quite a...
What's it anchored to?
That one... There's a number of different... There's a number of different training. Run it one more time. This one was anchored with a hook, and I'll show you the hook in just a minute. He hooked it right over the window sill and just came right out with the hook. The pressure of his weight holds it right in place. It's a specially designed hook. There's other techniques that we use where we take a halogen tool, and we can slap it right into the corner of the window and have our rope on it. And it's not really attached to anything, just the pressure, the weight of our bodies holds it there, and we're able to rappel out. And it has a self-belay device where he's able to lower himself from that point all the way to the ground. There are techniques, and there's a whole training system that goes along with this program. We're trained to bust out drywall and hook to partitions, or hook through a doorway here, hook around the doorway, any anchor point that we can find, self-rescue. And they do this all rapidly. You saw how rapidly he was able to rescue himself in that video. And this is the... It's a whole self-rescue system. This is the device, but it's actually a system. Our firefighters are going to have... This is their bunker pants, their turnout gear they have now. This harness will be purchased, and actually, the manufacturer will sew it into our gear. It's all rated, a rescue rated. And then, there's a lowering device. This rope is specially rated to take heat, because some of the videos that we showed or that I had had fire coming right out of the window while the firefighter's falling out, or bailing out, we call it. There's a large hook which can be wrapped around... It can be wrapped around stairways. It can be wrapped around risers. It can be wrapped around walls and a carabiner. And this is the system. This is the whole system combined. Then, the third recommendation was to provide adequate CPR during patient transport with the automatic chest compression system. The chest compression system is a pneumatic chest compression tool that delivers CPR to a patient while maintaining a fixed depth and a steady rate of compression. It allows paramedics to focus on other life-saving efforts like airway management, drug therapy, IV therapy, and they won't have to concentrate. And I'll show... We'll bring up Ron Dempsey here in just a second to show you how this really works. And it's quite remarkable. I can't tell you the number of times that I was doing CPR going down the road and trying to hold on with one hand and do CPR with the other. You're not seatbelted in. It's very dangerous for our firefighters. This is a hands-free... Once you get it set up, a battery will last forty-five minutes, and your CPR never varies. Right here, you see a well... This is... This was a... This is an EKG strip of CPR. This is a well-trained paramedic doing CPR initially. And after thirty-seven seconds, you can already see... This is measured in millimeters of mercury, and a hundred is going to give you some perfusion. And it's starting to drop off already after thirty-seven seconds. And by the time eighty-five seconds comes, you can see it's about half of the efficiency it was when you first started. The CPR compression devices will maintain full compression, full efficiency, for forty-five minutes. While... And it allows us... And we don't ever have really a forty-five-minute transport here. Our transports are five or ten minutes. But it still allows our paramedics to be in a much safer situation during transporting and a much more efficient operation. And I can let Ron talk about the outcomes that they've had. There's been a lot of fire departments that have had extremely positive outcomes just because the thermodynamic effect of that versus the human CPR is greatly improved. So, I'm going to... Ron Dempsey from Medtronic. I'm going to let him demonstrate this. I still am amazed at the technology that comes along in the fire service, and this is right up there.
Hey, everyone. My name's Rob Dempsey with Fizio Control. We do the... We're the manufacturers of the automatic defibrillators that cab out your hallways, as well as what the paramedics use when they arrive on a cardiac arrest run for defibrillating. But this device, as you said, it's very simple to use. It's just simply a pump. And when it's working... This is what it does. So, it'll give compressions a hundred a minute, two inches deep, and it'll pause to do ventilations, as you'll see here in a second. So, the paramedic would give two ventilations, and then it would start back up. It's battery-operated for forty-five minutes of continuous use. You can also plug an AC power cord into it and run it if the battery's worn down, or you can simply swap the battery out to continue extended use. It weighs eighteen pounds. It's very deceiving. You might look at it and go like, "Well, that's a pretty small patient. We have larger people around here." It's very deceiving. I've heard that it fit a person four-hundred-and-forty pounds in Grand Rapids. What it does is it allows the blood flow in the patient in cardiac arrest to perfuse the vital organs to give them a better chance of surviving. In addition to that, it keeps the paramedics safer when they're driving down Nine Mile on the way to Providence, light and sirens. You know, if somebody were to pull out, paramedics are now seatbelted in. But the patient's benefiting from the best perfusion that's possible, because medics, as this chart shows, it's very tiring. If you want to do good CPR, you have to do a hundred compressions, two inches deep. Has anybody ever done that? Or then, it's very difficult.
Extremely difficult.
So, this doesn't tire. This will do the same quality compression twenty minutes into the event as it starts out in the first minute. And it fits in this backpack, so it's very portable. It weighs eighteen pounds, and with two paramedics and training, they can have this on a patient in twenty to thirty seconds. And once it's on, they've got a big part of the, you know, the event taken care of. So, that's all there is to show it. It's just that simple.
All right. Thank you.
Do they have to lift the patient?
Yes, there's a backboard, a portable backboard, that goes under the patient.
Typically, what we do is we lean the patient forward like this, put the backboard under, and go right back down.
And then, this goes on top. So, the nice...
Sometimes you can roll.
What's nice about this is if you're doing compressions on a mattress or a soft surface, you're actually pushing down into that, so you're not giving the true compression you think you are. This can work on any surface, and you're only going to compress through the patient. So, if you're on a stretcher or a cot, an air mattress, it doesn't matter.
Mr. Seaver?
I'm sorry?
I have a question on this. You're looking to buy four of these.
That's correct. Yeah, here's the...
But you have five. Are you putting these on your trucks, or are you going to leave them off?
No, they'll go on the trucks. They'll go on our rescues. We have five... Or four life support...
Active. And maybe the backups.
Yeah, we have backups, yeah.
Okay. So, I just wanted to be...
For the service of...
In other words, these will be already loaded on your EMS?
Yep, they'll be on the light trucks, ready to go.
Okay.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah, is this something that we should have eventually in public buildings? I mean, we have the defibrillator here, but is this something that, you know... How trained do you have to be?
Well, it's pretty simple. I think if you had a rapid-response team in office buildings, it might be something that you could do. This usually good, efficient CPR for, you know... And Captain Columbo trains, and I don't know how many hundreds of people you train every year in CPRs and thousands. And that's why he's so strict with teaching people to do proper CPR, because even you can see even a well-trained paramedic how it drops off after time, because you just get worn out. It's just... And especially if you're a lighter guy and you're doing it on a four-hundred-pound guy, it takes a lot of exertion to go two inches. So, it wears you out. Whether it ever evolves into a... Like an AED where you could slap it on somebody and start doing compressions, it may. Technology may evolve to that.
Just one additional comment is that what I've noticed all my years on the road is that people who stop breathing are very inconsiderate, and they don't really care where they stop breathing. And they don't stop by the front door for... They're upstairs, they're downstairs, they're in very awkward places. And we have to move them out the front door. So, that's when compressions really suffer. I don't care how good you are, trying to do compression on somebody while you're moving up and down stairways. And if somebody's on a stretcher, it's extremely difficult, if not impossible.
What you do a lot of times, going in the hospital...
Yeah, you'll stand on the railing while we're pushing. It's awkward, it makes the stretcher top-heavy, so this takes care of all that issue.
Just a really, really good tool. This is the fiscal impact. If we'll go over this quickly. The new radio system is quite expensive. It's six-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy dollars. The nine self-rescue devices are sixty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-four. The four automatic chest compression devices are sixty thousand. So, that's a total that we're going to ask for in the grant is eight-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-four. The AFG has actually improved. It used to be an eighty-twenty. It's now a ninety-ten, which is better for us here. The federal government will pay ninety percent if they approve us for all of these items. We'll pay ninety percent of that, which is seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy. And the city will be responsible for ten percent, or eighty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. So, basically, you're paying ten cents on the dollar for all of this. And the city match is provided from the equipment revolving account upon award and upon approval, final approval from Council.
Mr. Seaver, move to Seymour.
I'll say I'm moving Rule 10.
So, if you missed Seymour, though...
Yeah, I want to... How long is expected some time to apply that you already know?
That is hard to say. There's different rounds of grant approval. Sometimes you get approved on the first round, but they go into twenty and thirty, forty rounds sometimes. So, sometimes it'll take up to six months to get approval. These are all high-priority items, because they either have to do with safety or improving interoperability. So, each one of these items is a high-priority item. Although they'll all be looked at separately by different committees, hopefully, we're going to get approved for all of them.
Do you know when they do this as they come in, or do they do it at certain times? Do you've got a problem?
December fifth is the deadline, so they're going to acquire them all and make sure they go to the right committee, and that committee will start reviewing them.
So, everybody gets the same...
Yes. Yeah, and they're... The reviewers are people in the, you know, fire service. Yeah, so they understand. They look at our financial picture. Our grant writers have been very successful. We brought in over two and a half million dollars in grants over the past... Well, prior to Chief Healy leaving. So, they're very successful. They've been pretty successful in this grant writing. Ken Wheaton is writing the grant for the new radio systems, and he's helping out a couple of other firefighters with the rescue devices. And he's approving it to make sure that everything... A lot of it flows into one. So, your financial situation in one is still a financial situation in the other, showing a need for it. And I think we have a really good chance.
China, that is definitely something to give them.
Oh, absolutely.
Right there. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Seaver, move to Rule 10.
All right.
It's moved by Mr. Seaver, it's voted by Mr. Moss. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I'll move the permission to apply for the FEMA grant for the 2004 assistance firefighters.
All right.
It's moved by Mr. Seaver. For the... Mr. Seymour, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Name's Motion Drake.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question. Any presentations in a lot of the presentations that we... That I hear, when we talk about, like, for example, radios, we're not up to do stuff with that. In relationship to other departments, we're behind.
That's correct. Ours worked... The city made a decision to kind of be on its own with these four-hundred megahertz a number of years ago and kind of stuck with that. And the rest of the state and the region kind of moved into eight-hundred megahertz radios. Now, there's some drawbacks with the original technology. Maybe we're going to be better off as we move into this new technology. Captain Scheich could probably speak to some of the problems they've had with the early eight-hundred megahertz and the communication capabilities. They're a little more complicated. I usually put it on Channel One, and I'm able to talk to any one of my firefighters. That's good. These new radios are going to be dual-van. They're still going to have the four-hundred capability, which means we don't have to trash our four-hundred radios, and they're going to be the eight-hundred capability. There also, that I didn't even bring up here, they're going to give us... Right now, we have one fire ground channel. I have one channel that goes through the repeater. I'm going to have three fire ground channels that go through the repeater. So, if I have a major incident, say a building fall down, and we're running that incident over a long period of time, that one channel's going to have a lot of communication. What if something else comes and happens in the city? I need another fire ground channel to operate on, so I can have a couple of incidents going on that aren't stepping on each other. Right now, we'd be stepping on each other. And in the future, what we're hoping for is we have the capability to handle more than one incident and have clear communications. Because that's really where people get hurt. When you have a breakdown in communications, that's what kills people.
I guess. And that concerns that, you know, our... They're no fun. We spend a lot of money for public safety. And when we get into these changes, it seems that we're behind other departments. And I'm just wondering, is a revolving fund not putting us in the front door, keeping up with the rest of them? I mean, I always feel like there's no one equipped better than our fire department, police department. And yet, I hear sometimes when we... In some areas, we're not up to snuff. Or we... The choices that we make are not adequate today. And if it's not adequate, at what point do you say the system is inadequate, and now we've got to go on to another one? I mean, if we wait for a grant, that's one thing. But what if the need is needed before a grant is available? Do we wait till one becomes available? Or how do we take the fall?
I think the radio system that we have has served us very well for our local requirements. Right now, our whole industry is changing to where we have to rely on our neighbors a lot more. There's a lot more regional backup and a lot more state backup now. We have Mavis Mutual Aid Box Alarm System. It's a statewide mutual aid system that we're fortunate to be a part of. And our radio system, I think, worked very well, and it's still working very well for what we do. But we're kind of trying... That's where I think we're thinking ahead right now. We're planning for that future. We're planning for that P-25. The improved interoperability. We could go along the way we are right now, but it's not at the level that we want to see it at. So, I really do understand what you're saying. And I think right now is where we're really taking the steps to take advantage of some of the federal funding to help us out, so the city isn't down the road. Because remember, I said, the radios we have now aren't even in production anymore. So, we'd have to go to a new system eventually. And that's something that we've recently found out about... So we'd have to go to a new system eventually. And that's something that we've recently found out about. It's not something we've known about for years. So if you want to add any?
If they have been, but if they are not available, it just didn't happen yesterday. Somebody had to see that the technology is changing and changing quick. And I'm just wondering, why the delay? In my own mind, I think we're ahead of every department, and we should be. And yet, we say, hey, this thing is not even made anymore. And just trying to say, when?
I think there was an expense a while back and maybe Rick.
Mr. Fakasi? Mr. Fakasi, if I can answer your question. At a time when we were ahead, we chose to put our money in a good radio system. We were one of the best in the county, if not the best, radio system in the county. We put our dollars in that and it worked well for us. A lot of the other communities did not, so they had to change before us because their radio systems were not as good as ours. Ours has served us very well. Ours reach up- ours will reach, it's a little scratchy on the portals, all the way up to Pontiac. But the problem is, is the rest of the county has changed to an 800 system and our neighbors to the south have done the same. So this is a way that the federal government is enticing us to eventually migrate from that large expenditure that we put in our original radio system. This is the way the federal government is enticing us to get prepared for the next change, is to go to the 800. And we don't have to do it immediately. We can still operate. That's the radios that we're looking at are dual-band. They will still function until we're ready to make that jump. But right now, the federal government is wanting us to get involved in that direction.
Mayor, and then Mr. Seaver. I just wanted to be clear. We're purchasing a system. Does it include the equipment?
Yes.
So all of the equipment that we say will absolutely now go away? So we'll have the ability to transmit on a high level, but are we replacing all the equipment with it?
This grant lets us purchase mobile radios for the trucks, dual-band. The mobile radios, or the base radios that are in all the fire stations, and the one in dispatch, and the one in the EOC. And 40 portables, or 36 portables. They'll let us purchase up to 36 portables. One for each member of the department on duty at a time. So...
We wanted originally to purchase one for every firefighter because they have GPS capability. And if we assigned it to that firefighter, we'd be able to track where that firefighter is. If he went down in one of the buildings, we'd be able to track it. But they're not allowing us to do that. One for every seat. So if you have four seats on your engine, they'll allow you to have four seats.
So they will still operate with our current radios. So we will have enough between our old radios, because they were not assigned to a person. Between the old radios, until we make the move, we'll be able to use those for certain guys. And we'll make it priority where you are in the department. The two systems will be merged until we're ready to make the jump to the 800 system.
Okay, my other question is, so the police and fire use two separate systems?
No, we're currently all on the 400 UHF.
So when you move up to the 800, what happens?
The PD wants to eventually look to do the same. Our grant just happens to be no.
So for dispatcher, since the police doesn't have it?
The two could- the two will not affect. They could still- they could be on separate. They could still be on separate. And we will still be able to be on our 400 system until we make the decision. And we could choose the option to just buy, to move some of the radios. A group of radios could be moved for the other.
Um, I think this is great, but I don't want to hear later down the road that the police now or the dispatchers are using dual. You know, I- I'm not really sure that it's just one part of our public safety is on a higher system and the other part is on a different system. And it probably could be explained to me better, but that's a concern, I think.
There is compatibility. And what we currently have right now, I would think that the- they're compatible with what we have now, but this is a major step in the right direction.
Yeah.
I know from spending time.
So when are we gonna do police?
Pardon?
When are we gonna do police?
Well, the police, we just approved a new investment there with their motorola system at the desk. But at a certain point, we will have to come back and address the radios. We've had meetings. Our communications policy has been centralized and it's been housed in the public works group. And we've done a review of the radios, you know, police and fire. This is one of the opportunities. When you look at the items on the wish list, the grant's willing to fund that. Pick up 90% of it. So yes, we're picking that piece of fruit early, up a little bit earlier.
Okay.
But at a certain point, there will be new radios and that will have to be put in our police cars. And I'll- there's a story right now running on Department of Justice, putting 75 million in cameras on cops instead of on the cars. We may find ourselves moving in a whole different area of technology. Part of this is an obsolescence factor. 9/11 was a wake-up call for us. The great blackout was a wake-up call for us in the communications arena.
Katrina.
And then we have the federal government selling off these bands of width. And that's part of it. Is that whole policy spectrum is that FCC has taken a good, like, almost twice as long as you would have thought. It was a 10-year process to handle how they were gonna sell that bandwidth. Now that that's finally coming down, you see at the federal level, public policy where they're saying 800-megahertz is what the local and the state, that's, we're being, we're in that bandwidth. So now it's time for us to adjust our equipment. Councilman Fakasi, or Council President Fakasi touched on a larger issue, and that is equipment replacement. That is an issue, you know, during the Great Recession. We quit funding and we changed the formula for our equipment replacement. So that needs to be taken a look at too. We need to make that commitment so that when we need to replace this equipment, it can happen.
You know, it's just, we should all be working together. But I hear that the grant is driving and opportunities here now, so...
But it's, Mayor, it's consistent with what our plan and vision. I know the fire department's been with public works and police department. It's- in a perfect world, we'd maybe be working in a different order, but the grant is, as you say, driving it. I hope to be, speaking to a council member, staff person frequently about this.
How long ago was Laverne here with the EMS or the dispatch? I mean, we proved that, how many months back?
Oh, Meredith?
Meredith.
Meredith Morgan?
Yeah, but.
Three months ago.
Laverne came.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
Laverne and Meredith.
Yeah.
Right?
How long ago?
It was, I think, August, August, September.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're on our way.
Mr. Seaver?
Yeah, my question was to spring off of what Captain Fakasi was talking about. And that is, you're going for this now in this grant, and I'm sure you have wish lists. What is the next thing that you would need that some other, that's on the market, other departments have it, that would make ours move?
Can I be honest with you?
Toward the front, yes. You got enough guns, now you need people.
I need people.
You need people to use them.
Yeah, we're at a lowest level since 1974. So run volume in 1974 was about 2,800. Our run volume now is 13,000. So we're asked to do more. Luckily, technology like this helps us out. But people, that's what I really need.
Mr. Seaver?
That opens a whole new discussion. I'm gonna go there right now. I remember when we, several years ago, when we discussed this 800-megahertz system and why we decided not to run it, well, at least by time. And I'm very much in favor of this and I think it's great. I think we're doing the right things and more than the right time. We catch enough, I think we have to do it in the right order.
Chief, let me ask this question because it's a sore spot with him. How can we get more mileage for public safety and we are still, and we're still people short? I mean, there's no- there's no more money left in the bucket anymore. It's over like, if I remember, General Fund, it was $42 million for public safety out of 67 million. And I said, you know, everybody's down, we're down 240 people throughout the, all the operations. We don't have a public works director. We don't have a press select director. We don't have, I mean, we have down to the bone. And, you know, I don't know how to get there to put more people. I know it's in need. But, you know, everybody is in need. And unless we get some more income revenue coming in, I don't know how we can even answer that question of putting more, getting more people on board. And if we do have money to put more, you know, whose department is not functioning? And I sit here with over $20 million worth of construction going on and I don't have a public works director that is out there telling me whether or not the job is good, you know? And that really bothers me that we're that far behind that we can't even inspect the jobs that we have going on, excepting for the engineering firms. I just lay that on the table because I don't think there's a councilman here who wouldn't wanna have more police and more fire and fill these other departments. It's just a matter of where do you get the money to do it? And this helps out a little bit by getting more technical. But it's still something that we council have to deal with.
No, and I appreciate that. And I can tell you, I talk with our firefighters every day and they understand that. But our department, our department is declining in numbers. Our department is getting older quite a bit. Where our average age, my average age at headquarters fire station is 49.8 years old. That's pretty old to be out pulling holes and fighting fires. Your chief of department has been out pulling holes this last winter. So, I mean, you can, you can't, you can only stretch a rubber band so long and then something's gonna break. And if either the community gets hurt or my people get hurt, I'm not willing to do neither. I'm not willing to sacrifice either. So that, we, I understand the mileage went through, but property values had dropped so much. I think I remember Mr. Shiret saying even with the mileage that year, we had 13% down. So that was, that was, you know, had that not happened, 13% down, we'd probably be in a much better position right now.
In some way, somehow, you know, the public safety has to come up with some solutions on how we can accomplish any budgeting differently or whatever we have to do to get more men aboard if that's the situation. Anyway, I know it always comes up at these meetings, we're short and we're short everywhere, you know, and I don't...
And I understand that. I was just trying to answer honestly.
I know we were, I know. It's okay. Thank you. We proved that, then we did. Yeah, the rule 10 and also the rule of the, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I just want to commend the department. It's kind of touching on the heart of the issue of the staffing and that. Despite the staffing and fiscal challenges, they're still going out there scouring and looking for you. And reading these federal regs and the, that federal code. It's not easy stuff. I mean, it's time for killing, it's super small plant. I just wanna, they could have thrown in a towel and said, ah, what's this? You know, let man figure it out. They're doing their part. I appreciate that.
Yes, you know, I think both your parts, both sides are doing a great job. I mean, I would have died to give to anybody. But, you know, there's too many studios that, like we did, you know, we need more billion value, down to two billion value. That's a big mess. Anyway.
Well, rest assured, they're still out there working hard.
I just wanna say, on a federal level, I know there's a federal dollar. And, you know, that's why I'm so excited because these are things we need to prioritize because it actually makes it there for you and helps our community. And, you know, this, for all that you do, you know, we can't say enough thank you. But I have a doubt, Jeremy have a doubt, the council has a doubt, to support you so that you can do your job. Thank you. Great idea.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
By the way, they are guaranteeing us some more money so we can hire.
Yeah, you have a number on a key dial, I hope.
So if anybody needs a telephone number in Washington, we'll gladly give it to you.
This year should get blanked. Next year should get fuller.
Who needs a handover, Mr. Seaver?
No, I, um, just wait to buy.
Oh, alright. Next thing, there's still, you know, medical, whatever it is.
Good evening.
We, congratulations.
If council may recall, the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act was passed in 2008. And this council entertained regulating in compliance with the state law back in 2011. And at the time, I believe there was still a lot of open-ended questions. At the advice of the city attorney, the council entered into a moratorium to wait out some of the court cases working its way through. And three years later, some of those court cases have been settled. We've worked closely with the city attorney's office to come up with some regulations for consideration. We do currently have a moratorium that ends on January 5th, 2015. We are bringing back some draft regulations for consideration should you desire to adopt some regulations at your December 15th meeting in compliance with the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. What I'd like to do is just go through our approach to this. This will be similar to alternative financial institutions and other adult regulated uses. Will be limited to specific zoning district in the city. It'll be regulated as a special land use. On a case-by-case basis, a public hearing would be required and council would have final approval. There would be the general special land use requirements that you would consider and then specific regulations. We have recommended that these be only considered as special land uses in light industrial districts. And a medical marijuana facility shall be subject to the following conditions. And these are consistent with other similar type of uses that we've acted on before. Any parcel has to be at least 500 feet from a residentially zoned district or a drug-free school zone. And a drug-free school zone is 1,000 feet out from the schools. Any parcel within 500 feet of a house, an adult regulated use, a school, a church, a childcare facility or park, and any parcel within 1,500 feet of pawn shops and alternative financial services should not qualify for a medical marijuana facility. If we go back to the state act, the state act allows a primary caregiver to provide assistance to a qualified patient, up to five qualified patients. They can administer or grow up to 12 plants per patient for 2.5 ounces of marijuana. And they have to have an intimate relationship with that qualifying patient. So they can't provide this on the street to the public. It's not open for that type of use. But if a qualifying patient does not have the wherewithal to obtain medical marijuana or grow medical marijuana on their own, they could seek out a primary caregiver. We do not want to encourage this to happen in their homes or in residential areas. So we're trying to provide a regulated, enclosed, safe facility for the growing and the distribution to qualified patients only. And these are called medical marijuana facilities. These are not dispensaries. We're not promoting or suggesting that dispensaries to the open public would be allowed. They would be regulated by the hours of use. They have to meet all those setback parameters. Consumption of marijuana on the premises is prohibited. It has to be an indoor, enclosed, locked facility as defined by the state. Drive-through facilities are not permitted. There has to be a security and lighting plan. Loitering is permitted. Entrance to the premises is limited to people over 18 or somebody with a legal guardian. They shall not be used by other primary caregivers. And they have to meet all of our building code safety provisions. And the city attorney is also preparing a business licensing component that would go with these types of facilities. So, similar to other types of uses that we've regulated as a special land use, we've, uh, put all the parameters in place, and there's two possible locations that a facility, should they meet all of the standards. Uh, they can be located in the first street industrial park and in the central business park. But once one has been established, it actually limits the number of ones that can be, be, uh, installed around that. We have the potential for four total facilities in these two industrial parks, if they meet all of these requirements. And each, each of these will be on a case-by-case basis. Uh, given, um, if they are approved by the state, they're approved by special land use in the city, and they meet their licensing requirements, of course, the owner of the property would have to also be an agreement of allowing these types of facilities in their buildings. That's a quick overview. Um, if the council has any specific quenched, questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Moss, Mr. Cyber, and Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I, I think this is incredibly comprehensive, and, and I think it, um, follows with the intent of the voter-passed law, which also putting up some very reasonable and, and meaningful for a local government-level regulation. One thing that, you know, I think, uh, it was Lansing, when I was working in Lansing, um, Lansing didn't have a moratorium, and Lansing didn't have any regulations, so these popped up everywhere. And one of the things I think that was very devaluing to the community most was the signage. Um, and we have regulations that, you know, you can't put up a sign that says, "Look," or something like that. Is there any way that we can attach some sort of signage regulation to this? I think that just makes it, uh, I don't even know how to describe it.
Well, we would have our normal sign ordinance that would be applicable, unless you're saying there should be a different sign regulation.
I kinda do, a, a little bit. I mean, I, how do we, how do we, you don't-
You don't need a sign, you're right.
Yeah.
They don't need a sign, because they're assigned, uh, the cu, you know, five customers-
Right. It isn't like you're trying to attract the public.
Exactly. I don't, I don't want there to be kind of-
I believe we covered that, Mr. Moss.
Okay.
It limits any signage other than a very small application.
I don't even really wanna see a pot leaf on, on the signage.
No, there's no signage, there's no signage allowed because it's not a retail facility, it's not open to the public.
Okay. Okay. That was, that was my biggest concern.
And we can even look at that, maybe if we need to make it a little bit tighter, we'll do that.
Yeah, that's, that's, I actually value in this a, as a, as a medical product, I really, I, I do understand that. Um, I just don't wanna make, I just wanna make sure it's done in a way that, um, keeps it advertised as a medical product and not-
Right, right. Exactly, exactly.
Mr. Cyber? Um, Carrie, I, I wanted to call you today, and I ran out of time, but, um, when I read this, this is very, very similar to what you proposed two or three years ago, correct?
It is, but it has been updated. There's been three amendments since that time.
Yeah.
And we were waiting, uh, to see, uh, how the state was gonna act with these dispensaries. Now, that is going through the process, but it does allow, um, communities in this particular case to not allow dispensaries. And they're going by, um, dispensaries, medical marijuana provisioning center, and safety compliance facility. Those are all the dispensaries. What this is, is a facility to grow, um, you know, legal medical marijuana.
The, the beauty of it, really, is we're not saying no, but we've made it so difficult. And, and the thing that's not said here, besides limiting to four, but the thing that's not said here is that if I've only got, if I can only serve five customers, I don't know how I would pay the rent or the light bill to even grow this stuff in the first place.
Yeah, and the, the law says-
It's, I don't see the profitability.
There is no profit, right. You can't make a profit.
You can cover your costs.
Cover your costs.
I don't even see you covering your costs.
I agree.
It is difficult. We, we do feel, and, and the state, uh, court system always looks at reasonableness with mobile home parks and other things. We feel that we meet the intent of the state law, we have a reasonable amount that could possibly be permitted without banning it outright, but also not allowing it to be profused throughout the community.
Well, we know from the, the Supreme Court case that we were waiting on, that, that Tervet versus the city of Wyoming, Wyoming, that was the case of whether the city could just outright ban it under the Federal Controlled Substances Act, because marijuana is still a Schedule I narcotic. And so, some of those cities, Wyoming, Livonia took that approach. If it's a violation of federal law, it's not permitted in, in, in any zoning district. And that's what the Supreme Court said, of Michigan, said, "No." This is a state law that allows it, cities, you're creatures of the state, and you cannot enact an ordinance that bans what the state law allows. So, that's exactly, we defaulted back to our traditional zoning approach, and what's reasonable, and put it in a district that we feel is appropriate, and set the restrictions and the limitations to govern how it operates.
And the U.S. Attorney General has said, though, that they still have the right to enforce federal law if, if they believe that somebody's, um, using, using it as a cover for illicit use. So, there still is that federal protection, and there's still that police, police protection. As someone has said to us in, in some of the comments, there's a lot of transactions happening now on the streets, that's what our police department's for, uh, but this is to try to, a legitimate person that's trying to do good for, um, legitimate patients, they can have a facility that's safe and secure, and, uh, they don't have to have the threat of people breaking into their homes or having other illicit traffic happening in residential districts.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes, uh, were these, uh, reasons, definitions, were these definitions things that we thought up, or are they-
Definitions were from state law.
Those are from the state law?
Mm-hmm.
The one I have, question I have here is drug-free school zone. It shows that it's, uh, drug-free, drug-free school zone is defined as an area inclusive of any properly-used property used for school purposes by any publicly-funded primary school, whether or not owned by the school, and all that goes on. It doesn't say anything about private schools. Is that, uh, was that an omission, or is that just-
The, the definition for the drug-free school came out of research with the, how the federal government defines drug-free school zones.
Do you have to apply to be a drug-free school zone? We, we just don't, just because you're a school doesn't mean that you automatically get it. A school applies for it?
It doesn't really matter. This doesn't address private schools in this definition.
But a private school, what I'm saying to you is a private school could apply for that designation.
Then it should say, "Or private."
Yeah, we'll look at that. Whether a private school, if a private school is empowered and allowed to apply, then, and, and be granted that status, but it's just-
Then it should carry the same weight.
So, we'll take a look at that.
Because a police, it's, it's a police matter at that point.
Right, right.
It's not whether it's a private school or a public school.
Uh, we, I'll work with the city attorney. We do define school, though, as, as a public or private school or school system. So, we'll, we'll just make sure it's consistent.
Okay. Uh, the second, uh, thing is that I'm on a, the Fair Committee of National League of Cities, and this is one of the issues that we deal with on the Fair Committee. And I have brought, uh, uh, some copies of a resolution, a draft for a revolu, resolution that our committee came up with to be addressed, to go to the federal government. There's one thing that we talked about that's not addressed here, and it's the fact that because most banks won't deal with marijuana trade because they don't wanna be caught by the federal government dealing, because marijuana trade is still, is seen by the federal government as a class one, uh, which is illegal to deal with. So, there are a lot of banks that won't deal with this, so it turns out to be a cash business. A lot, a lot of it is cash business, and, and these rules that we have here, I don't see anything in here that says that they have to have drop boxes or some other way to re, reduce the likelihood that someone's gonna come in and rob, because it still makes it prime for them.
Yeah, I, I think you'll see those kinds of things addressed more in the licensing ordinance that we're working on, in terms of how these things, this is the zoning. Uh, the licensing is going to actually require a specific, it's almost exactly what we did with the hookup. So, there were, there were zoning aspects for the hookup, and then we did a licensing provision. And there were all of these type of restrictions on how that business operates. So, that's a good point, but all of those types of things are more in the licensing, which is in process and will be coming.
Okay. I wanna just pass these things out, so, uh-
Sure, we can take a look at those while we're drafting, too.
Yeah, to make sure that they're consistent.
Yeah.
And segment, I was gonna take my whole day home. Other than that, I don't have any other kind of, but obviously, you've done some work on it.
Wish you speak on us? What do you need?
Uh, this will be on December fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay. The public hearing.
Public hearing.
Well, those are the different, different comments that made by the committee.
Mr. President, the next item, Levarn Walker, Director of our IT Department, will be presenting. Uh, this is a consent item. We're asking, we'll be asking for approval on the consent agenda to December fifteenth meeting. Uh, wanna just recognize Levarn and her team, and she'll, uh, discuss it. This is very much, uh, a work in progress involving. Uh, there are still some pieces that we need to put together, but I'm gonna turn it over to Levarn to make the presentation.
I'll just, uh, very briefly introduce myself, and then I'll show you the mobile application.
I don't think that thing, well, so, I'm gonna use your, I just-
My outside voice, okay. My name is Levarn Walker, I'm the Technology Services Director. Good evening, I'm happy to show you our mobile application that we've developed for the city of Southfield. The city administrator approved the first phase so that we could give you a live rendition of the app. Again, like you mentioned, it's a work in progress. I'm gonna have to step over there, because I'm, I need to get near my cell phone. This is a beta testing. It will be released in the Apple and Android stores on April, sorry, December twenty-third. Um, and right now is the time for us to make any changes, so if you wanna make this interactive, I'd like to know now if you'd like any changes. We get one more chance to make this change before it goes live. After that, any major changes will be done when there's a operating system change with, like an Android or, um, the Apple Store. So, if you look at the screen right now, you'll see I have, this is my personal cell phone, so hopefully I won't get any text messages.
You should dress me up at that thirty-five, four thousand, not a few pages.
Yes, this is my personal cell phone, so, okay, uh, Southfield is the app, that's the icon. I had a committee of sixteen people from the city, I was the project manager, so that's the icon we designed. Again, we can change it, but this is what we did. I hope you don't have a lot of changes, but I wouldn't like your comment. So, you're the first group of, besides the internal staff, to see this, so if you have any comments, please let me know. I'll tell you the changes that I've already, that have already been brought to my attention I am gonna do, but we'll go through very slowly, so you can see, and take a look, and I hope you like it. This is the splash page, it launches very quickly. Is it too dark? Can you amplify it a little?
Yeah, why don't we-
Not all of them.
What you see right here is we have what you call triggers, and that's why I'm gonna talk through the letter that you have. Right now, the city administrator has authorized, um, nine thousand four hundred ninety dollars just to give you the first phase. So, we only have a hundred and fifty points of interest. And points of interest are locations that will flag a person if they're driving by or they're walking by. Within the content management system, we can set the distance, it could be twenty-five hundred meters, twenty-five meters, whatever we set in the system. So, you can see that there's one launching right there. If you look at the screen, there's gonna be a couple popping up here. So, you can see I have seven triggers down in the lower right-hand corner. What it does, when the trigger, when you're, when you drive by a trigger and you're near the proximity, your phone will vibrate, and that, um, display message will come up. If you look at the top, we have a logo, Southfield Center of it All, and we have, um, a, a thought process behind what you're looking at. It's much better. What we did as a committee, we thought about the Center of it All, where a, a series line of highways, so these are highway signs, so there was a logical behind the thought process of what you're looking at. We wanted to make it very simple for anybody, your child, an adult, seniors, to look at this and, and use our mobile app. So, I'll go through each one, I'm gonna start, you know, E in play, and we'll take a look at each one. So, uh, keep in mind, we're work in progress. I am asking for council authorization to have unlimited points of interest, and I'll talk about that as I show you the first location. We'll go under E. When I go under E, we pick the page, um, this is what the committee picked, we have a picture behind it, and, um, what we're gonna change right now that has already been brought to our attention, we're going to combine coffee and sweets, and we're gonna add a kosher, um, option there as well. But I'll just show you an example, points of interest, I'll just go into All. So, what we're gonna do, we have locations other than the city of Southfield, like, for example, if people come here and they visit here, use our hotels, they may wanna go to MGM Casino. So, we want to direct people to places of entertainment in our metro area. But to give you an example, what we're gonna do, we wanna feature Southfield, um, businesses first, and then other businesses second, so we will have it chronologically ordered because we wanna support our businesses first. The reason I'm asking for unlimited points of interest is because, right now, we only have a hundred and fifty, and this is, is a, this is an example of a feature that is not a point of interest. So, right now, you can see miles, so right now, if I click on my phone, just go to one of them, you click on it, right now, I can get, I can go to map, and I can get some, like, turn-by-turn directions. So, points of interest, when people, I know mostly you've heard of bringing your own devices, um, because we're a mobile society. So, when people are traveling or visiting our city, we wanna give them the easiest mechanism to get to our businesses in, in the city of Southfield. But if we don't have all points of interest, the committee, we felt that it wouldn't, um, get everybody the same playing field. So, that's why we're asking for unlimited, so everybody that's in this mobile app will have turn-by-turn navigation. Also, if you wanna call, you just click on call, it calls that business. So, I'll click on back. So, this is an example of why we want it. We do, uh, we have talked to the developers, barring me, we want it to look different between the main name and the sub-name, and this space will be eliminated. So, we have seen some, again, this is beta testing, so if we saw the flaws, I've identified them, and I'm working with the developer. But this is an example of how we're gonna have Southfield businesses featured in the featured listing, but that's also another way for us to sell to businesses. So, we wanna use this tool to possibly get people to buy into the app, so if someone wants to maybe show their logo, we can add their logo or picture of their business to the left of this. And I'll show you an example when I get to city buildings. So, we wanna get people using it, and we can get demographics and statistics. Again, um, I'm not sure if I was clear, but this is a global app, so anybody anywhere in the world will have visibility on the city of Southfield through the Apple and Android store. You can ask questions, so, we go through each item, under that. So, again, everything's not populated because I want to see a council approve the unlimited points of interest, so I can do it one time, because it takes a lot of time to put all the content in here. But I do have some stuff in here already for your review.
Shouldn't there be more of a contrast in that, between the background and the-
The picture? We can do that. You wanna be a little bit more transparent?
Well, yeah, so that, when people are looking at it, they don't have to squint to hit the words out.
I can do that.
I can see it just fine.
And on the iPad, it'll be, it'll be bigger as well.
You're closer to it.
The next item, under play. So, under play, we have a background for play, if you don't like the contrast, I can look at that.
Well, that looks great.
It looks great. Yeah, sometimes the background color is always a good. But one thing we are gonna do, um, where there's parks, it's not just gonna be parks, it's gonna be parks and recreation, it's gonna be parks and rec. And, um, I have featured listing, one thing I did wanna show you is like the online registration for parks and recreation, where you can click on it, if someone wants to go to online parks and recreation, it will take you right to the, to their search page. If you zoom in, so you can see, right here, they get a registration.
And then we could use that for the classes we offer, or-
And go to ice skating, for example, you can show the courses. So, right now, anything that we wanna show or promote, we just have to populate it into the system. So, if it's not there now, that's something that the Parks and Rec Department can do to make this mobile tool a little more useful. Do you wanna say something?
And this is where we've got a- And this is where we've got a little bit of evolution because what we want to do is get to where someone can register for their golf tee time or even buy ice time. This is all set up. Right now, you could do this online for our classes that we offer, but we don't have an online version if you want to rent the pool for a Sunday afternoon for your family. And that's what we'll be working on the next few months. I envision that this mobile app, we have the arrangement with the LTU student, Parks and Rec, that will be working in the lobbies come spring, help people get this installed. We have a strong following, people using our webpage as well as our Facebook, the city, the library, Cable Fifteen, Parks and Rec. This just becomes part of that evolution in our messaging.
That's just an example. Again, anything you want, we'll find a featured listing and then everything else will follow under. Okay, this is the play page. Go back. Today, we just have a little flash page and we're just listing the hotels. So again, all the hotels have the turn-by-turn and you can tell that because you see the miles and the distance. And the distance is always from where you are.
What's the difference between featured listing and then it goes into alphabetical order? How do you get on featured listing?
I have to do it in the content management system. We actually have to go back there, flag it to make it a featured listing. Otherwise...
Is there a reason why some are featured or...
Just let me show you for this example.
Oh.
But however, there are hotels that may not be in the city of Southfield, like I mentioned before, maybe the MGM Hotel, which is in Detroit.
Yeah.
We would want Southfield to be listed first, but of course, if someone, that's another thing I have to show you, if someone were to go up here and search and they're just looking for MGM, it'll come up.
Okay.
And that's another beauty of the tool. If they don't like the easy page that we designed for them, they can just go up there and search and type in whatever they're looking for and it'll take them right to it. Because of course, we can't fit everything on this one page. For example, today doesn't have it, it's listed, but if you go under shop, for example, we can only list what's got the category. So that's why you have that catch-all under the search feature. Under the shop, under the shop category, one thing we did change because this is a back-up beta version, we put in the business services. It's not populated yet, but that's where we're going to put things like FedEx and people trying to copy the Office Max and things of that nature. We have the RX for pharmacies. These are the categories that we thought people would be looking for when they came to the city of Southfield. Under events, we just have city events, live, where are any events, and other. We left, we put other in there because if there's something going around, a lot of times even city employees don't know what's going on down the street, but if they notify the city, we can put it under other events. One thing I do want to mention that these pages, while they look like they can be changed, we can't just add another item later, so that's why we're trying to do that forward thinking because that would be an example where we would have to wait for an upgrade with the operating system. So while it looks like it's a click, it's like an embedded page that we can't just change. If you see something, that's an example. If you see something and you want to add it, it will be best to let me know now. So if you click on city events, it just takes you off city events.
I'm a little confused by what you just said.
Okay.
Go back to other events. So for instance, on the twelfth of December, we're having the annual sing-along with the Southfield later singers. It's not a city sponsored, but it's a community event. Could you get it on there or you'd have to wait for...
You would be able to get it on there, but that's where we're going to have to come up as a city with policies for how these get populated. But yes, that would be...
Yeah, okay.
We're hoping to make everything online.
But the field would be there.
Exactly. But right now, there's nothing under there. But if there was something coming up, we would put it there. If you see something going on, we want them to go to the mobile app and maybe it's there, maybe it's not, but someone has to notify us like you.
And one of the things we discussed, if it shows up on the city's website, I think it could default through the mobile app. So if the event was listed on the city's website, then it would show up here.
Yes.
Who's going to be responsible for entering the amount and making the decision? We'll go down here.
Pardon?
Who's going to be responsible for the content?
We might, it's coming down to public information. This is an extension of that public information piece, so it'll be housed there.
But I'll be doing it for now.
The next few weeks, we're going to be making some recommendations dealing with some other communication groups within the city.
So right now, if you want something added, I've been doing it. Okay, under media. Under media, we have the welcome video that we have from the website because we thought that was a nice way to promote the city. I do want to show you that from this other project that I've worked on called Granite Hills, that you can have Cable Fifteen live now from the mobile app and on our website. So even if you don't have Comcast at home or AT&T Universe, you can still come to the mobile app and you can see what's playing right now live on Cable Fifteen. I don't have the volume on, but a nice little feature for people that don't have cable television at home.
Would it be a benefit for, to have the locations of the schools?
We're getting there. Yes, we have that.
What is the postcard?
Yeah, what is create postcard?
Oh, I'm happy you mentioned that. The postcard is a nice feature. I was going to talk about it when we get down here. That's an example of the postcard. But if someone's visiting Southfield and they're so excited about being here, they can click on create postcard. They can take a picture of themselves. Make it as fun, thank you. And we take six pictures. That's another example where if we want to change the six pictures, we need to do it now. But the committee that worked with me, you can change the background. And we take fall shots, winter shots. And people can actually click in there and they can change the text. You can change the stamp.
You know, Laverne, I have to tell you this.
Yes, okay.
We... We were, you know, several of us attended National League of City meetings in Austin. And we were given beforehand, we could download a mobile app for the conference. Some of us really, really, really used it. I mean, we, it was kind of like Facebook. We put what sessions we were in, what was real, you know, new learning, things that, you know, we photographed each other, the events, and that was really fun and it kept you engaged. And in another whole way, I've gone to a lot of conferences, but this is engaging a conference in a whole nother way. Plus, we ended up, Jeremy and I ended up meeting people that I probably would never, we would never have met. We hadn't posted stuff. People came up to us, oh, I noticed your comment. So your, but your postcard is kind of limiting that.
Can I add on to that?
Yeah.
Like a four-square type of feature, you know, checking in, posting pictures at places, kind of a newsfeed type of component to that.
Okay, yes. But we're limited to the developers of the app as well.
Okay.
And I'm happy to mention that because I do want to talk about phase two of what I'm asking council to authorize. We, the technology department, feel that the complex that we have here is a little complex. People are always getting lost and every time you see someone, you're asking them, you need help. So phase two, we wanted to actually implement this technology called iBeacons. And iBeacons will give the residents and visitors inside GPS turn-by-turn navigation. So if someone entered Parks and Rec and they're looking for a building, we could, if they have the app, it'll say you are here. That is something that we asked the developers to develop for the city and they want to charge five thousand dollars a one-time charge to do that. So if we want something like that, we'd have to, of course, document the specifications for that and then see how much they would charge.
Like, it would be cool if you could go in to eat and you have your food or whatever, you know, you could check in or review or something, like an extra feature to it so you can see who checked in there, who reviewed it. I mean, it's a huge, obviously, undertaking. But yeah, but I mean, if we're going to do things that are all-encompassing for Southfield, I mean, that'd be a cool component to it that probably isn't there right now.
Right, exactly. We would, again, have to define those goals.
Sure.
It sounds simple when you say it, but from a developer's standpoint, you have to speak their language and make sure you get what you're asking for. But phase two of the authorization is asking for at least that inside internal GPS for residents and visitors visiting the municipal complex. And once we have it here, then we'll be able to use this foundation for maybe the library. If they go over there and they want to find the children's department or nonfiction, things of that nature. So we're going to start baseline and move up. But that's something that, you know, we want, we have to define it. But that's all we have right now for the postcard feature. So that was under media. We put create postcard because people may not look down there and notice it, but that's why I'm happy it was mentioned. We do have social media, which we have a separate page for, and these are the Facebook pages that the committee discussed and came up with, and it would link to people directly to Facebook. A lot of people are on their phones daily.
Do you have your Facebook pages there?
Yes. Actually have more than that, though, I don't want.
The postcard, is there an application where you can share it on Twitter and Facebook and wherever, so at least that gets kind of...
Part of what you're talking about.
Yes, it does. It was there. Over there, as you see, share. You can share it out.
So that might help at least start a little bit of this stuff.
You can save it to your phone, send it later. Isn't that social? And then we have find. And this is find, and this is where we have airports, city buildings, education, that you mentioned for the schools. We are changing airports to transportation, including in school like March and Pass along with the airports. When we click on city buildings, what we are going to do is have a picture of every city building. I have an example of where I did want for Parks and Rec, where you go in, at least you can see it. But that's an example where we could charge as a service for businesses to have a picture of their logo in the app. And I just gave an example of hours, you know, the hours of operation. We will try to have at least a picture of all of our buildings to show people the potential before we launch December twenty-third. So the worship, they're just going through our city website. But education, that lists all of the schools and we also listed the precincts here because schools kind of tied in with elections. So if someone's looking for a precinct, they can just go there. And of course, it gives them turn-by-turn to a precinct location as well. These keywords right here, voting, location, precinct, education, that's where that search keyword comes into play. Anything we put in there, if they're looking for fast food or something like that, we try to take the time to put everything that people would possibly think of when they're looking on a travel basis. So that's all your schools. We have a lot of schools in there. So that was find, and then we have services, which we are going to change. We're going to change this to just map and we're going to remove seniors and we're going to populate this differently. So under, for example, under reporting issues, we do have a couple of things under here like for police department, for non-emergency numbers. Someone had mentioned there were car accidents, but if you call, it's called the police department's front desk. So we're trying to put everything that people fingertips when they're traveling throughout the city. And you can sort, I don't know if I showed the sorting feature here. And if you were back under, for example, find, you want to sort, you can sort by distance as well. So down at the bottom, we just have the info setting, so people can turn on the triggers. They keep popping up on my phone. It's annoying to them. You have the postcards. This little button right here just takes you to the city's website. Because we're not trying to replicate the website, so we want to get people to go back to get all of our resources. And a bookmark, so if a person is going to a page regularly, they can bookmark it. And I just gave an example of how I just bookmarked the Parks and Rec Facebook page. And that is it. Four is the triggers, those points of interest that are nearby right now. And I just, I featured Civic Center because I know before when I showed it, someone mentioned tenants, baseball, that we're not advertising that, so I put it up at the top. Everything you put featured, it still shows down here, but it just puts it up at the top. So if we had a hundred, it would be a little bit more.
And Laverne, we can have photos and then we can eventually do streamlined videos.
Yeah, you can video.
And that may be part of a product lineup that we sell. You know, a group may decide for a church or a restaurant, thirty-second spot, but we were talking about maybe up to ninety seconds. It's a whole product using our multimedia cable group to feed in, into that. Do you hear me?
Even going beyond that, I was thinking, Groupons, coupons, everything like that, linking it with the Chamber. I don't know, has the Chamber reviewed this or could the Chamber look it over? I think that would be a good place to go next, just to see if there's an opportunity to connect with the business community.
And this app has a slew of options that, you can have voting, you can have residents vote on something. I know Michael Mannion did the calendar for pictures. We could have did that through the mobile app. This is still like a work in progress.
Sure.
It's a baseline of, just to show you, give you an appetite for what we're trying to do and then we can grow it from there.
How are you rolling this out? I mean, I think there could be some, maybe even some sort of online promotional video on our city website. I don't know, what's the planned rollout for this?
What technology's planning to do, my department, we've put Wi-Fi on this campus, so from the Wi-Fi, anybody that comes on the premises and uses it, it'll tell them right there, download our app. Also, on the website, we're going to put the little icons at the bottom that says, you know, mobile app available when it gets clicked on it.
Okay, that's good.
And as far as the campus, we have to probably talk to the administrator and get signage on the doors just to let people know when you come in, you know, we have a mobile app. So somehow, we're going to have to advertise.
The code, you know, the code.
We have, and that supports that.
That could be on every city document.
As long as they have the app on their phone.
Yeah, yeah.
And I see a point where we're in the lobbies of buildings and, you know, Phil Lucas and the team from LTU, that's part of putting this together.
Yeah.
The buildings across the street and the DEA, just to begin linking and strengthening that network.
And lastly, one thing that may be a personal preference, who would probably annoy me pretty quick, is all the pop-ups. Can you turn off?
Yeah, that's where I went in here. You can turn it off, proximity. And we could turn them off too, like in the content management system, I could turn them off. So like this campus has so many, I can just turn on one for the municipal complex.
I couldn't handle thirty-four thousand notifications.
Because that would be a lot.
Mayor, and then, then, is this things?
We have, I feel, we have a lot of restrictions going up as employees in the building. And this seems like it's wide open. Is this a separate system from what we use as employees? So like, if we go onto social media or, what's, that's the one I tried and we couldn't do it.
Yes, it's separate. I know what you're talking about. Computers, you can, yes. On the computers, on city computers, I have to by law protect the city so that people can't get to like inappropriate sites.
You do a very good job of that.
Thank you. Thank you. But this right here, when I said BYOD, then bring your own device, these are personal devices, so therefore, they can get out. However, if they're using our Wi-Fi here, then, you know, I'm responsible for it. That's still third, of course. But if they're using our cellular bandwidth, they can go anywhere they want to go.
No, they can't use our Wi-Fi.
They can. It's just, they just can't go, once they're connected, they can't go to like inappropriate sites. But they can go to like Facebook or, they can. That is open, that is open.
So is our building wireless then?
We do have Wi-Fi on the campus and the police department and the court. I've put it in several places yet.
Mayor, there's when you just opt to choose a snowy burden.
Oh, I have, oh, there's, I'm sorry. I have one of my staff members sent us a push notification because I wanted to make sure you knew that because it's global, if there was a snowy emergency, we could say Southfield residents only. If there's a delay in trash pickup, Fred can authorize us to do that. Right now, myself and Renee are the only two people that can send out push notifications, but Fred's going to have to designate because it goes to so many people. As long as the app gets downloaded, I'll be able to see demographically where they are, New York City, wherever, you know, they might come here to travel, but they may keep the app when they're at home. But I asked him to send a push notification to remind me to talk about it, so that was good.
The other question I have is, we had talked about, it may not be you, but we had talked about making that area across the street or this area to be Wi-Fi. I guess it's something I think would...
I can tell you, it was discussed as recently in the past, just the past week.
But what I do, for the campus, can't be done outside of the building. It could be done like for the tennis courts because I have a daycare over there, but I can't do outside unless we talk, something, yeah, that's a bigger scope.
Mayor, is it done?
Yes, I just say that would just solidify this area. And you talked about traffic and blocking and people being in this area just sitting... and people being in this area to sit, because you could sit there and go, I have it, or whatever.
Is there any consideration in possibly advertising this in the calendar that's gonna go out?
The calendar?
It's not really, you're doing.
No, it's not, it's not done?
We, we could get, uh...
It's a great, yeah, true.
We're waiting, he said hopefully next week.
This code, so...
But if you could somehow put this in the calendar, that's gonna be hitting every single household. No, it's not done yet, hasn't been...
Yeah, I know he's doing the final touches, but we'll take a step back and...
We're gonna have a time cable fifteen as well, and we'll hit, we'll work together.
There's a lot of...
Mr. Sager? You know, just another thing that happened at National League of Cities. We were in a general session, the whole thirty-five hundred people were there, and it rained all day. Everybody was hunkered down, it was really raining, and there were flash flood warnings. In the middle of this address, everybody's phone went off, including the speakers, about, you know, and it was an alert. And it, you know, we all kind of looked around like, what's going on all of a sudden? Everybody's buzzing, ringing, whatever, and including the speaker. So it was an amazing thing that, you know, if we had an emergency here, everybody gets on this app or...
We can use that.
Is it true, Mayor?
Yeah, Nancy just reminded me that she and I talked to the person that's doing this.
Yeah, I told her, yeah.
Yeah, they were, yeah, they were exhibiting at the National League of Cities. The emergency, would this be like, if you had an amber alert, the police could put something down?
They could, it could be used, yeah. But like I said, it can be used, but we need to use it carefully, because everybody gets it. It's not like I can just say, people in that awful area, but yes, you could do that.
Just as a...
You could, you could.
A tongue in cheek, will this work on my rotary dial cell phone?
No, not at all. But it does work on iPad, iPod, tablet, any type of tablet.
So, yeah, I don't want my phone to be smarter than I am.
Do you have a rotary dial?
So, Mayor, you talk, can I talk about the money?
I, um, I needed to, the specials are real quick. Money perhaps we could use.
Yeah.
All right, so right now, the council decides not to approve the request I have before you. This is where we are, and this is where we can stay. So we have a hundred and fifty points of interest, so what we paid so far, we paid the seventy-five hundred dollars. We paid the initial setup fee, the one-time fee, and I recommended that we do the iPad feature, because I mean, iPad will be even better. So we did pay that one-time setup fee, so the city administrator authorized the nine thousand four hundred ninety dollars. So if we decide not to authorize the request, we would stay in this zone, and then that's when all the businesses won't have the turn-by-turn navigation, but only a hundred and fifty. And that's when the committee says, well, how do you determine who gets that feature? Well, that's why we recommend the unlimited, that way we're planning for growth. Everybody's, you know, included, they have the same feature, so this is what we're recommending for the annual cost. So right now, I'm asking for the five thousand dollars for the IVCIS technology development for the campuses here, for the inside turn-by-turn navigation, and we're asking for the, um, for the fifteen thousand, for the, um, actually, it'll be an additional seventy-five hundred dollars, we've already paid that for the unlimited. So council's request, for this request right now, twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Done.
Is that annual?
Annual, that's actually one time right now, because IVCIS technology is just one time. They're gonna develop it, and they're done. It's gonna be included in the same price, same fifteen thousand dollars. So the annual recurring cost will be the fifteen thousand. And we're gonna try to offset that cost by trying to sell to businesses to get their logos added. So we're gonna have to have a whole marketing campaign, or at least a marketing discussion, to see how we can offset the cost.
Mr. Sager?
Uh, she does answer this. We, it's like the calendar, we recruit most of the cost for the calendar by the advertising, so... Personally, I think we should go for the full tilt. It's a way of marketing our city, what's here. You know, I think we all hear from time to time, well, I didn't know that you had this, I didn't know there was that there. And more and more people are in tune to this, using apps, I know they're growing on my cell phone, you know.
Laverne?
Yes?
With the approval of council, when would this go into effect?
Well, if don't you approve it, after next week, when it's approved at the regular, next regular meeting, I'll start, it'll go into effect immediately. So I'll start putting in the unlimited points of interest, but it's going live in the Apple and Android stores on December twenty-third. So the public will be able to download it in less than a month. Right before Christmas.
Will it be a free download?
It's a free download.
Anything else, Council? No, it's a light.
I just wanna say, that's phenomenal what you've been doing.
Oh, thank you.
Nice job, isn't it?
Yeah, it's great, yeah.
Fast, wasn't it? You did a nice job. You cut it fast, really nice.
Thank you.
Do you provide individual training for people who don't have it?
I will train for people.
More than me.
More than you. Well, we could, if we want to do something.
We'll go under Communications.
Kamala Gerald, P.O. Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three four six zero four three nine. I was gonna talk about something else tonight, but I want to remind this council and this administration during the time that Janet Garrison was here, I told you guys that the people did not want enclosed lock facilities in their city, or houses that store medical marijuana. You guys told me I was wrong. When I assisted Mr. Lance sending out these notices, you weren't on council, Jeremy. It was a huge turnout, and people said, no, they did not want this. Now, what people voted for, they voted for the use of medical marijuana, not to have the enclosed lock facilities in their backyard. I think you guys are treading on very dangerous waters to try to allow zoning here, when the government says that it's a Schedule I narcotic, and the police are still going to enforce it. You're going to give the people that are the criminals, that are trying to make money at this, you're gonna give them an open door to come here and do that. You don't have department heads, you don't have enough firefighters, we're still down police officers. Who's gonna police it? Who's gonna police it? The only way something like that can work is for you guys to get the police involved. And I don't think they want to waste their time being involved with just this little thing here. Now, it's not about the money, Mr. Fraser was right, because it was on the news. Banks do not allow any proceeds from places like this to be put in the bank. So this is gonna be a cash and carry deal. This is only going to bring property values down in the city of Southfield. And if I need to rally those neighborhood associations here again to these meetings to tell you, they do not want this in their community. And I think you guys are just doing a disservice. This just, some of the stuff that was discussed here tonight, it just shows that you guys are not visionary. This city is still under the same old status quo, and here we go again. Status quo. You need fresh faces, a fresh approach, and visionary leadership. And this is what this city is lacking. And I hope in 2015, if you're going to be where the mayor used to be, that you practice a little bit more professionalism.
entertain yourself.
I know that. I was gonna tell you that. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I don't believe we're at the same meeting. What we're proposing, uh, is impossible for anybody, and yet it meets the state requirement. Between what do we cost in overhead, and the severe limitation on max four locations, I don't know how anybody could freak out about that.
I guess Mr. Fraser says it quite often, you know, if you don't do the homework, you don't know what we're talking about, you don't know how we're trying to protect the city, I guess. You shouldn't get up there saying anything. But anyway, Mr. Muller?
Mr. President, my name is Gerard Nolan. My address is Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Southfield has a first-rate police department, and Southfield has a first-rate fire department. But sad to say, Southfield has a third-rate post office. That was evident last May twelfth at the COW. Not to worry, for every problem, there is a solution. One solution can be found in the center of the center of it all, in that oasis on Southfield Road, that pearl of a city called Mecca, also known as Lake of Village. In Mecca, there is a post office on Southfield Road. No, it's not a mirage, it's a real US post office. I know for sure, because I have used it for the last forty-six years. No long lines, short waits, and friendly service, postal parables. But even in Mecca, life is not always perfect. There is one caveat, unless you're walking or bicycling to the Mecca post office, there is a parking issue, because there's no real adequate parking. So if you're driving, you need to find another nearby solution. Again, not to worry, because there is a little-known post office at Tell Twelve. Yes, Tell Twelve. Where? Inside Office Depot, at the back of the store. They offer everything a regular US post office offers, except no P.O. boxes nor money orders. But they're open seven days a week and six nights a boot. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mendelstein, two two nine zero five, not sure if it was working or not. Two two nine zero five, Pontchartrain Drive in Southfield, Michigan. I'm happy to be here and to do the same at the last of the desk, so I'm happy to be the last.
Did you enjoy the meeting?
I enjoyed it immensely. That's an extra perk I get, being here tonight, especially the technology part. I'm happy to invite everyone on council and the general community to join us in the annual Hanukkah menorah lighting, which I plan to lead this coming Hanukkah on December eighteenth at five thirty PM. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate, and we'll be warm like it was this past weekend, but if not, we'll be there whether it's cold, or icy, or freezing weather, because Hanukkah is all about lighting up the dark and warming up the cold. December eighteenth at five thirty PM. I work at the Labava Yeshiva, the International School for Kabbat Leadership, and every year we have the honor of many of the students coming, and adding joy to the event, and dancing the Hora, so we'll do that again this year. Last year, we had hot apple cider, which was a big hit, and everybody loved it, so it'll keep us warm. We also had a fire show, which worked out very well, and a lot of people, I believe, came, a lot of extra people came because of that, so we'll do that again this year. And I just want to thank the city, I want to invite everybody, I thank the police department and the fire department for their assistance. And if there's any questions or comments, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions, Council? Nope.
I hope everybody can...
Somebody's toes.
I always imagine I have a windstorm.
I hope everyone can personally make it. If you can personally make it, it'll be our honor if all of you can come. And we'll be there on Thursday night, the third night of Hanukkah. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Lance is always up there on the ring, trying to get by.
Jeremy will help him.
Jeremy will help him. Thank you. Thank you for all the...
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, you're the last one on the down flip, but...
Thank you.
Anything else, Council?
Yeah, I have, I have, um, everybody saw this Pottery Market, you know, this is something that they're kind of Madison-type, that's the school, and they can't, they're holding it in the union building there, I can't remember the name of it, but it's most beautiful of it. And it's hugely packed, and they're moving to Southfield, which is amazing. Joni Grant and Carland have been involved with, Joni does art, as most of you know. I would urge you to come, because all of these things are just amazing. We have things from ceramic cups to soap shakers to George's art pieces that you can put on the wall, or statues, it's stunning. I mean, it's preview, charges ten dollars to come in, we're getting complimentary tickets, I think they'll get some. But if you're the least bit interested in gorgeous pottery and beautiful art, you can look like it.
I have about four other invitations that came in.
Well, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful event.
Start that five thirty, right?
It's, um, six, six, six to nine, that's the preview, but it's, um, through the...
The wing come in.
The preview is nice, because normally they charge, and you get the real, you know, you get to see the best of the best. But I just urge you in one way or another to see it, because it's been a little to come.
Anything else, Council? Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, um, this is, with the term, can you, if you can, help us with this article, it was in the paper? About the two lawsuits?
I did not see this. The one, the smart bus, this lawsuit just came in, and the allegation is that it was, the weather wasn't good, our employee slid, and they're sliding into the smart bus, and a person on the bus is claiming they were injured. This just came in, though, we just routed it over through Ellen, order paying through, so again, I don't have a lot of information on that.
You're quoted in it.
I'm quoted? Oh, well, that's probably what I said. Of course, yeah. Well, I didn't say they didn't have time to deeply look into it, I said that the lawsuit just came in. Other than looking at the complaints, I mean, we don't, we haven't gone into it in detail. So there's just this one?
There's two.
There's two.
Yeah, the police could turn it over.
Isn't that the only approved already?
Yeah, we've approved a couple. Yeah, I don't even know about seeing this one. You know, I, for what, I think what's happening is, you know, they've got a service where they know what gets filed up in the court. They know it, and we haven't even been served. Remember, once you file in the court, you get a summons, and then you take that summons, and you serve the defendant. You have a long period, I think it's six months, if those summons are still valid. So sometimes a case would be filed, and we might not get served for three, four months, that's not unusual. So I don't know that we've seen this one, because I don't receive it, uh...
Ain't quoted?
No, I'm not.
No, it's quoted in general.
Yeah, right. The first one I had seen was the one employee, but I have not seen this one, so I suspect we have not been served on that one yet.
Poor guy, whoever's on that, it looked like he fell off the bus and got run over, as many travels as he's got.
Wow. Everyone claims that, I mean, this is, it's just, it's standard...
Yeah, the only thing I did see was the alienation of the plaintiff.
Well, that'll probably be in there, but I mean, it's standard verbiage when the plaintiff turns out to asking...
That egg, his hair falling out, his shirt hurts, his back hurts.
Right, right.
I love those, like that.
Yeah, walk through.
Right.
Didn't have sex with his wife for six weeks.
Yeah. Poor guy. Yeah, poor guy. That's it, that's it, for me.
Anything else? I've got to talk to my colleagues, though, that there was an article in the Free Press today, and it brought to my attention, and has been totally aired in, in wrong comments made by myself. And I'm very disturbed with that, because I'm really looking forward to putting this team together, and doing a lot of things in the conference lot this next year, without any conflicts, without any problems, without any other, pretty running for office. I, I do not intend to run for mayor, I talked to council prior to this, but I don't want any interference, and what we plan to get done this next year, and so I want to make it very clear. And put this behind this rubber, what's said by this guy. I don't even know this person, and he's probably, has called me five times, one right after another, at the Kennedy. He's got his head in one way, and he's confused office space.
I saw it.
Yeah, so I just want council to know that, maybe, and may not be a concern, if anybody's thinking that I let them down the road, but there's no intention of, you know, okay? And let's have a good year.
All right.
Thank you, don't you?
Oh, yeah, and you have your committee, so, you have all your committees. Thank you. If you don't, if you don't like, your committees are on this, okay? Yeah. Thank you.